Andre, you're still on mute. Yeah, I don't know what that thing was all about. So we'll call the meeting to order. And the approval of the agenda and order of business. I have a few things. We have a correspondence from the village Chester, which we'll, we'll deal with in public session. And then we'll have some discussion concerning the content in camera. And my, I may be mistaken, but I think that I was told that Andre wanted to add the seventy-two hour shelter in place to the agenda.
I think I saw that too.
Yeah, he's on mute. Yeah, you did. Okay. Okay, well, that was it for me. Yeah, Floyd?
But excuse me, last meeting, I sent everyone a picture of a green card and I asked to have it added to this agenda. And because we're not going to workshop, I'm gonna ask if I can have that added on just for a few comments.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else? Anybody?
No, just, is this regarding the fire contract, the village commission or?
Yes.
Okay, because I was going to ask, because we haven't heard anything in a while.
We, we have gotten some correspondence from, which we'll deal with.
Great.
Then we'll have a discussion. Yeah. Yeah, Andre, was there something else? No? Okay. Okay, somebody prepared to move the agenda as amended?
Some more.
Second discussion, all those in favor? Posed motions carried. There is no public input, so we're on to the minutes of the previous meeting. Any errors or omissions there?
Motion to approve, circulate.
Second.
All those in favor? Posed motions. There are no public presentations that I'm aware of. So we're on to six point one quarterly reports, corporate strategic management. I don't know who's leading that.
Sam, we can only see half of him, buddy.
Okay, I'm leaving it. You see my screen that says corporate and strategic management quarterly update?
Not yet.
No. Okay, stop sharing. It didn't work then. Um. Okay, let's try this. How about that? Does that work?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so. Uh, and this is, I'm, I'm doing second quarter and third quarter, so this, this basically takes us to the end of December. From my last update. So the special projects we've been working on, strategic planning. We did, we revised the priority chart to include more detail on resources, allocations, timing and strategic capital and operational priorities. And then we had a workshop with council and updated our priorities chart again. And reviewed and update, had a review and update and discussion on the snapshot of our priorities. And that was done in September with council. Looking forward, probably next, early next month in February, we'll be doing another session for the upcoming year as part of the budget preparation.
Yeah.
Diversity and inclusion. We have new members appointed to that committee and our first meeting is scheduled in January. Jen has been, been leading that work with Nadine as well. Rural Internet, Jonathan led a workshop with council. And we invited Develop Nova Scotia to come in and present as well, had a facilitated discussion with them in December. So that work just continues. I heard yesterday that there looks like there might be some work happening up in the Suffolkville area, Suffolkville area. Transition twenty fifty, we continue to work on that. We're hoping to bring a report forward in early February with some options. So that'll just be a summary of the study that was done with Clean Nova Scotia. Where they've made, they, they went through and did an audit and did some background data research. So they've got a report with some targets, reductions, reduction targets. And they've got, we've got a few items that would maybe form an action plan for council. So we'll bring that report forward. Accessibility, the Lunenburg County Accessibility Advisory Committee is, now that we're hosting the accessibility position, we're also hosting that, that committee as well. So we're in the process of filling the vacancies and reappointing members. We advertised for new members. Ellen has been working to support a process to recruit some new members to that committee. So we need to take the the applications to the nominating committee, which is the group of mayors and ward, the group of mayors and wardens. They'll make recommendations to council for appointment. So that'll be coming forward shortly.
I haven't seen Rand lately.
Yeah, she's been working from home, but she's, she's getting lots done. We continue to work on the action planning template to provide a means to organize our actions and budgets. You had a presentation from Ellen about accessibility and her role. What else have we done there? We've done some specific projects. So she's supported planning to use enabling accessibility fund from the federal government for accessible, accessible washrooms. So we have a grant right now for a hundred thousand dollars for two accessible washrooms. So she's just been working with staff on what that might look like. And how we're going to use those funds, providing input into the creation of the outdoor dining bylaw. So we've been working on the outdoor dining bylaw. Recall that for the last couple of years now, we've done a pilot project partially because of COVID. And the restaurants needing some increased capacity for dining space. And so as they're restricted inside, they've gone outside and used some of the outdoor space for dining. But this year, we're going to need to have an actual bylaw in place. But we've been making sure that we've got some accessibility built into that byline, this, the considerations. We know that TIR is probably not going to allow some of the stuff that happened last year in terms of this, the walkway in front of the folks all. You have to step down onto the road. So this year that they're going to want to see something a little more permanent there. So we're working on what those criteria might look like for the sidewalks. And we've, she's been working on collaboratively, working collaboratively to initiate an accessibility audit for the admin and annex building. So we know we're going to have to do an accessibility audit on our buildings in preparation to meet the requirements of the act for twenty thirty to, to become accessible by twenty thirty. So she's been working on, on that audit right now. And looking at ways that we can increase accessibility to our recreation facilities and programming. And the other thing that is interesting in there is that we are now participating in a rural accessibility and age friendliness assessment project. So that is in partnership with Dalhousie University School of Planning. They are the Peach Research Unit, the Planning for Equity Accessibility and Community Health Research Unit. All five county or municipalities in Lunenburg County are participating in that project. And the idea is that we're, what we'll end up with is an assessment tool that's specifically for rural communities to access assess, sorry, their accessibility and age friendliness. The outdoor burning bylaw. So you're going to see that coming back for a second reading. So following first reading bylaw was advertised, comments for the public were considered. Council requested additional changes. We revised the bylaw and gave first reading to that. For fire services, the registration documents for twenty-one, twenty-two continue to be reviewed. And we're still waiting for a receipt of audited financials from two of the commissions. We completed the follow-up meetings with the fire departments on risk assessment. So the consultant did go back for the risk assessment fire services review. The consultant did go back and met with each of the departments. So we're just waiting for that follow-up report and a revision of their final report. We expect that this month or early next month. Our next step will be to review that with the steering committee and then bring the steering committee's recommendations as well as the consultants' recommendations back to council for discussion and review. We completed the training and practice run with all the fire departments on the water shuttle accreditation. And we're working towards the final re-accreditation testing in, in the spring. We completed the purchase, registration and insurance coverage of the drone. And the fire services registered, registered three pilots with more to be trained on the, with the drone. Completed the resolution with Department of Municipal Affairs on behalf of the Western Shore Commission. So that's been in, in the works for a little while. We have renewed the fire scene security contract with the commissioners. Done procedures for, to issue cards to retired firefighters. Working on terms of reference for the fire advisory committee, working on trail access issues, continue to work on the accident and disability market survey and program review. And we continue administration of the workers' compensation board accounts for fire services. For Remo, lots going on with Remo. Especially since this was done prior to this weekend, this, this report. So we completed the wire wildfire prevention community day. And that was hosted by Chester Basin Fire Department. Continue to work on the status of the comfort centers, updating the status. I'm sure that'll be part of our discussion coming up shortly. Staff had visited new offices at Modal to review their processes and procedures because that is where our emergency coordination center is. So if we do activate the emergency coordination center and have an ECC activated, we would be at their offices, the backup are, is our offices. So we went to their new building, had a tour. Learn where things are, how to turn things on and off so that if we do end up having to go there, learn how to use the alarm system, all of that kind of stuff. So if we end up having to activate the ECC, we're familiar with the facilities. And we continue to review their facility, the requirements for our facility. So there may be some things added to the budget for this year. If we need to put some additional stuff in place. And we've participated in two desktop training exercises. Of course, this weekend was extremely busy with the storm. And then we got sort of a back-to-back, we got hit a little bit again on Monday night. So we've just been working with Remo on some of the issues that arose there. Health and safety, completed an annual safety inspection. And there's some corrective actions that are in progress. We completed the safety orientation program and there's been four sessions held to date. We're looking to move that program online. So that's orientation for, for new staff. So we're hoping that we get that orientation done online. Completed first aid training for new employees, some confined space training for our public work staff. The construction safety site audit that we do as part of our safety program, we completed again. Scored a ninety-seven percent and got our certificate of recognition and our letter of good standing. So that's good news there. I'm gonna kind of skim through the rest of that. You can see them on the screen there. I won't go through them because Bruce is going to be presenting you with an update here shortly. I don't think it's today. No, it is today. It is today that you'll get the year end on the safety.
Yeah.
Um, so for communications, there are some of our statistics. We're up in our Facebook followers and likes. We're up with Instagram, we're up with Twitter. So social media continues to be a, a great way for us to communicate. It gets the message out there. Media inquiries, we had four of them. We did three media releases. There was eighteen special observances of different, different events. We had one thousand five hundred and fourteen users to our COVID micro site, COVID nineteen. So that continues to be a good, strong number there. We had over a hundred thousand website views. And then our top ten pages, Tan Cook Ferry, sales, tax sales, waste and recycling, contact information, employment, building and development permits, events, property taxes. So they, they're pretty consistent with, with what we normally see as our top ten pages.
What you think.
And then just on communication support. So Jen's been working on a number of campaigns. So Trail Art, the Kaiser Meadow Education. And District Three Special Election. She's been doing some outreach with staff, traffic impact study, the village plan review resident survey. There was some work done around the Playhouse Fire, COVID nineteen, Sherbrooke Lake Stewardship Committee Communications Uniform Signage, Gold River Bridge Closure. And then some more work on character defining elements and built form in the village. So continue to be busy on communications. And I am going to hand it over to Erin to do the pieces on economic development.
Good morning. So in terms of investment attraction, we've had a number of inquiries in various sectors, including accommodation and food and beverage and the cannabis sector. We've held a couple of meetings with Nova Scotia Business, Inc. and also with the Nova Scotia Innovation Hub. That mainly is around Kaiser Meadow as one of their sites that they're promoting as part of their project for the bioeconomy assets of Nova Scotia. And an interesting fact on that is they've looked at over five thousand locations across Nova Scotia and narrowed it down to fifteen of the most competitive sites. And one of them is Kaiser Meadow. So that's exciting. In terms of Invest Chester Analytics, I just have a couple of graphics here of the most popular pages. Quality of Life is the most popular page with sites and buildings as of late. We've added to new contacts and, and new views in the backend of the site and the top five countries who visited. Canada, of course, and then following that is US, China, Dominican Republic and Germany. We've been working on a number of things for Kaiser Meadow. And we have a number of items here that are going to be coming to council. So the we're working on the highway signage pricing piece. We've received opinion evaluation from a couple of commercial real estate firms. The phase one environmental site assessment is complete and that report will be coming to council soon. We have a revised scope of work to get a more detailed content map. And we'll be bringing that back as well, as well as draft terms and conditions of sale. Three of our investment inquiries received were for the Kaiser Meadow Industrial Park. And so far, one has resulted in a signed letter of intent to purchase.
That's the good part.
On the business retention and expansion side of things. So this is our final phase of our sector marketing strategy. And we're working on the official program for that, which will come to council for sign-off. We've been working with local businesses in terms of responding to requests for inquiries or meetings and phone calls. Prior to Heather leaving for NSBI, we had worked a little bit on the arts and culture and recreation strategy, starting with research and speaking with other municipal units who have implemented successful ones. So now that we have our position for Community Economic Development Officer filled, we'll continue work in that area. And I have received certification to be a BREE coordinator. So that's through the Business Retention and Expansion International Organization. Some exciting news, if you've heard on OHC, they've announced a couple of new doctors who've joined us, which is wonderful. As well, we've got one new doctor recruited into the Hubbard's Clinic. So this was over the past couple of quarters. Our print and digital marketing campaign has been wrapped up with the Canadian Medical Journal. And we can say there's been a few inquiries that resulted from that campaign. We've been working on delivering our NOVA boxes to existing doctors, the nurse practitioners and a couple delivered to prospective doctors.
I can tell you that the two, the two doctors next door to me have already gone to work this morning.
We, so the Culture Innovation Fund Healthy Community Stream recently opened up again. So we did submit a proposal in partnership with OHC to further that program and with some new exciting elements. So if that's successful, we bring that to council as well. Tourism Chester was busy certainly in the, in the peak season. The mobile booth was at twenty-seven locations in June, July and August. And we had Matthew Sheehan was our summer student and he came from NSCC, the hospitality program there. And we had it also a couple, the booth is a couple of times at Halifax Waterfront, which is always, always great exposure for the municipality. And we've been assisting, planning day trip itineraries for the North American Christmas Tree Council Conference coming in July of this summer. As part of Tourism Chester, we were successful in participating in Tourism Nova Scotia's Digital Partnership Program, which drives a lot of new visitors to our sites. The goal for that with COVID was to increase awareness throughout the maritime. And typically the reach is far greater than that, but because of COVID, we focused on the maritime provinces and to increase website traffic to tourismchester.ca. These are some of the ads that were put out on socials as well as websites. And the stars you see would be the most popular ads that were put out. Some of the results from the campaign, we have some big numbers here in terms of new traffic to the website and click-throughs as well as social media and YouTube as well. Similar to our corporate sites, our socials are all up. We have, and you see there in the bottom right-hand is the graphic talking about the visitors to our site and that eighty-seven point two percent are new visitors. And a lot of that has to do with our participation with Tourism Nova Scotia's campaign. The top ten pages over the last two quarters is Fancy Spa, Lovely Lido Pool, Where Can You Stay in Chester and Castle Rock. And then finally, some of the other items that economic development's been involved in is the outdoor dining bylaw, which Tara already covered previously. And congratulations to you all for receiving the Community Spirit Award from Screen Nova Scotia, which is an exciting achievement and recognition from the film and the film industry, which is important, an important part of our economic mix here. We've been working a little bit with Shoreham Village and recruitment. They've been, as it's a common theme, workforce is a, is a struggle right now. And so we've been utilizing some of our website quality of life information to try and help them with their recruitment pieces. We've approved four economic development sponsorships. We did a little piece with CTV Morning highlighting the positives about living in the Chester area. That was for the QE2 lottery home. We sold a few Whelan Lake properties and we're currently in Agriculture Day planning. We're not sure what we're going to do there, but that is currently scheduled for March, but we'll see with the restrictions how that pans out. Completed year two of my certification. And the most exciting news is we hired our new Community Economic Development Officer, Olivia Corkum. She comes to us from Acola and she is currently completing her master's in public administration. So she'll be working two days a week until May, and then she'll be joining us full-time. And I think that pretty much wraps up our update for economic development.
Hey, thank you, Erin. Any big questions, comments?
I got one quick question if I, um. Not the most important thing in the, in the presentation, but I'm curious. The Whelan Lake sales, those were properties that I'm assuming you picked up at tax sale.
Yes.
Both of them. What's, what's the process of marketing and selling those slots? I mean, I know that area pretty well. So I know what we're dealing with there.
Well, for the most part, people just ask us if we sell them.
And do we have a price? Do we get them appraised? How do we do that?
Well, I'll let Dan answer that, I guess, more than me, but. Well, that's if he will.
I think Aaron was gonna jump in there. Do you want to?
Yes, I can jump in. So for, for those properties, we've determined that the market value is their assessed value. And so that's what we've been communicating when people inquire. And right now, we don't, we haven't marketed them publicly. It's basically word of mouth. So people within the, the subdivision that have been reaching out and, and buying them.
So what's, what's the assessed value of them?
They're four thousand dollars is what they're assessed at. So we charged the four thousand dollars plus HST plus the D transfer tax on top of that.
And what had they cost us? I mean, I know they're tax sales. What, what is our cost based on those? Are we losing money on them or are we, are we, what's the story?
Uh, yeah, I, I don't, we'd have to look into that, that analysis. I don't know that we've actually looked into. There's, there's very little ma, I don't think there's any maintenance on them. So.
Yeah, I know, I know the properties. I, I was involved with that development many years ago. But I just, I mean, assessed value doesn't, doesn't usually reflect what they're worth. And that's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah. And I. For the most part, we acquired them without having any purpose or.
I, I just think it's great to get rid of those lots. I know they're not water lots. I know what they are.
Yeah.
But just as a matter of policy, assessed value is not market. So that's not our general policy.
Not for other properties, no.
No, that's all. I don't want to get into it now, but it's something I'm very interested in at some point.
Yeah.
Because I.
Yeah. Well, I think years ago, if I remember certainly right, we did put them up and had them on the market for sale and we had no takers on them at all. So we just let them sit and then people came and were looking for them and we were I guess pleased to be happy to give it to them because they were no value to us. So I think that's sort of a bit of the history.
Yeah, I know they're unique. Floyd, I, I know the properties. I know, I know they don't have great value. I understand that. But it's more of a general question and I'm also curious with that. But anyway, let's move on.
Okay, Andre, you're on mute.
I know, I keep it on there until it's my turn. I know, I, I just wanted to get an update on three items and I may, they may have been in there and I missed it, but one thing was the landfill financial models. I know Tim's new to us and the last the last strategic planning document I saw showed a report coming back in quarter three, obviously with the change in rules that probably was pushed back. I was wondering if we had a like maybe a new timeline on when we might be able to see sort of a bit more of the, the business model for the landfill.
Who wants to respond to that?
I see Tim is there. I'm wondering if he's able, if he heard the question.
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah. So I do, I do know, maybe I'll start it. I do know that we'll bring forward the budget for the landfill this year. And that the budget was informed by the landfill model, but I'll get Tim to take it from there.
Yeah, as, as Dan just mentioned, the budget for the following year, for the twenty-two, twenty-three year is just in the final phases of fine tuning right now. We should have something done within less than a week from now, I would say. And then for modeling, we just need to have a few conversations about specifically what scenarios we'd like to provide. The model is kind of, I've had a chance to go through it and get it ready to a state to use. So we're, we're ready to do that in the near future. It would be a decision whether council wants to give us some direction as to specific alternative future scenarios they'd like to view. In the absence of those or in addition to that recommendation, we would also want to look internally it within administration to identify potential scenarios that we would like to model forward. And then we would be ready to bring that to council. So if there's specific interest in scenarios that you have, we'd be happy to take those into consideration to present.
Oh, uh, Tim, for your benefit, I think then this originally came up. I think we were being asked to make some decision on equipment and you know, for future development out there. And sometimes I think, at least for me, I feel on council that we're, it's a bit, it's hard to make those decisions because we don't actually know what the risks are. So for example, there are municipal units that we have contracts with, those contracts have expiry dates. Some of them are only a few years old. We don't know if they're going to renew with us. They may find another provider. What does that mean if we invest in, if we buy a, you know, a four hundred thousand dollar loader and if that comes to council for a decision, you know, what does that mean? Is that a lot of risk? Is it not a lot of risk? How, what does that mean? And so these models, you know, I would expect to see something with like basically all of our contracts in there when they come, when, when, when they expire. And if certain ones are or aren't renewed, what does that mean to our business? Is it a viable business? Is it not a viable business? Where is our risk? When we, when we invest in these capital infrastructure, how much risk are we taking on? And how much are we depending on the renewal of these contracts? I think those are, those are questions that as a business person, I think we would want to have answered. So that when we have the questions posed to us on council, you know, we can, we can. So that when we have the questions posed to us on council, you know, we can, we can make informed decisions. That's all. All right, and I had a couple of other questions, so thank you for that. I noticed Gold River Bridge was mentioned. It's a big deal, I think, for our recreational trail users. And just wondering what, I don't know if I missed it, but are we planning to see some like reporting back on what some options might be for that soon? I think especially in Allen and Abdullah's districts, they're probably very interested to see what the outcome's going to be.
Yeah, I hear about it a lot.
So maybe I'll, I don't see Chad there, so. I mean, the comments that Tara provided related to communications, not to the development of options and alternatives. Chad's best positioned to answer that. But I do know that Gord, we have received advice back from CBCL on the potential to use the bridge on Route Three for off-highway vehicles. And so there's implications of that related to the travel from the trail to the bridge and from the bridge back to the trail for off-highway vehicles. So I'm expecting a request for a decision that'll come from the recreation team on the options and alternatives to address the closure of the Gold River Bridge. So I expect you'll, council, you'll see that in the next month or so.
Great. So, so I wonder.
Long term.
Yeah. So, sorry, Andre, go ahead. I didn't know if you were finished or not.
No, 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 I think that's great. I was just wondering when we might see something. I did have, if you want to jump in on that, I had one more little item.
Yeah, it was just, I was going to speak to the trail thing because I've been getting a lot of questions on it. I guess, if, so if you're, if you're going to get access to the Gold River, the bridge on Highway Three, so that has to go through Department of Highways or RCMP, all that. So that's a long process, is it not? Or is it just another alternative, I guess? I guess, what I'm getting, a lot of people want to know what's going to happen. I just, I like, I like to try to tell them that, you know, in my view, we have to fix it one way or the other. There's got to be a way to fix it because you can't stop the trail. That's crazy. That's, there's no, we just can't stop it there.
Right, so use of that, if I could, the use of that bridge, buy off highway vehicles would require approval from the province. And the information that we received is what capital improvements would be required to even make it a potential option. But in addition to improvements to the bridge, you have to get the off-highway vehicles from the trail to the bridge in a safe manner and from the bridge back to the trail. So it's a more significant project than just some improvements to the bridge. So Gord will identify the general scope of that option and whether or not we feel it would be approved by the province. And then that'll be compared to other options, including long-term options and potentially a monitoring program for the existing bridge. So there's a number of different alternatives that we'll bring forward. But certainly focused on getting, getting those uses back in place for the trail.
Hey, Andre, you hitting some more?
Yeah, this is just my last one. Sorry to belabor all these points, but it's my chance, so I'm going to jump in here. The last one was on upgrades to our updates to our PACE bylaw. I understand from the worksheets that were circulated a few months ago that we're hoping to have a report back from Tim in this quarter to see about how we could change our PACE bylaw to allow for maybe residents to access financing for like onsite septic systems or other potential upgrades to their properties, their private properties. And I just wanted to double check with our, because he's new to the role, to see if we're still on track for this quarter to see something on that matter.
Kim? I don't hear.
Yeah, sorry. I don't have anything specific for you at this time. I think the decision, like, it's a little bit vague, right? I can't give you finance recommendations without specific understanding of what exactly we're looking at providing options for. So I'm not familiar with that particular conversation. I don't know if there were specifics that were feeding into that. Perhaps somebody else.
There was a few discussions at council here and, you know, maybe Tara can keep it informed. It's just, I know it's on your to-do list. Maybe you weren't, I'm not sure if you're aware of it or not, but I think we're, at least I am on council, very keen to see the outcome from it.
Oh, I'm aware of that on the list. I was just awaiting some more specific direction as to what exactly we're looking at the options for.
I can jump in for a second. Jonathan is also involved in that, so I think Jonathan has it on his radar to do a meeting. It was supposed to be this month. I don't know if they've, with COVID, having people working from home, it's been a little harder to connect. So that'll probably be something that we see before the end of quarter four. But it's definitely on Jonathan's to-do list shortly. It also will be part of the discussion we have when he brings forward a report on greenhouse gas emissions. So it'll be one of the action items there. So we'll, we'll look at that one and I'll try and get you an update, Andre. I can send it to council by email just to see where we are on that one.
Yeah, I think council, that is the first step, is the defining the program. And then the financial implications and how we manage that loan program would come second. So that is, I think that is the first step, getting that, getting that brought forward. We did, the council, you know, we did forward the information that you had shared with me about the programs that are in place in other municipalities and the work of Clean Nova Scotia. So we do have that and I know that will inform the work that we bring forward to council, so thank you for that.
Okay.
Alan, can I come back just for a quick question?
Yeah.
When Tara finished, she was talking about the corporate and strategic management. She got in to a little bit about the storm, Remo. And we talked, we're going to talk about comfort stations and she said there'll be more on that later. So are we going to go back to some of those things in this meeting today to talk about that? Or when does that come up later?
It's an added item on the agenda, the seventy-two hour shelter in place piece at least.
So that'll be part of that storm response? Okay.
Yeah. Anyone, anything else?
I do.
Okay.
Sorry, thank you. Just to go back to the Gold River Bridge discussion and I appreciate the fact that we're going to be receiving something in the next month or so, I think is what you had said. I'm just wondering if that's going to align with our budget deliberation? And maybe there won't be any needed budget deliberation, I'm not sure, but I would think that there would be. So I'm just wondering if that is going to align, if we're going to get some of this narrative hurdy discussion, you know, A, B, C, D options prior to when we have to get into the heavy lifting around the money piece.
Yeah, of course, that would certainly be the plan. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Anything else, anybody? Doc, thank you very much and we'll move along to six point two, I guess, which is vaccination policy.
That is me again and I am going to bring up a quick presentation here. Hold on a second. Not doing what I want it to do.
Do I have paper?
Okay. I'm going to share my screen and see if this works.
Okay.
Are you seeing mandatory vaccination policy?
Yep.
Okay. Much better. Okay, so if you recall, council gave direction to staff to develop a mandatory vaccination policy at the, I think it was the December sixteenth meeting, the last meeting before the holidays. So we have done that and you have a draft of that policy in front of you today for consideration. I just wanted to go through a few points with you, show you a few things that are in there and a summary of what's in there. So mandatory vaccinations, we went through and looked at what other communities have mandatory vaccine policies. It's not a comprehensive list at all. There's not one place where you can go and find out who has them and not all municipalities have them posted because some of them are doing them as internal policies and they're not necessarily posted on the website. But we do know that the municipality of the District of Lunenburg has mandatory vaccination policy with, these are ones with employment implication. So if you're not, if staff and council in most cases, and in some cases, members of committees do not have double vaccination, if they're not fully vaccinated, then there are implications for that. And for staff, it's usually an employment implication, unpaid leave up and to, up to and including potential dismissal. Just depending on a number of different circumstances. So municipality of the District of Lunenburg, the Town of Mahone Bay, the Region of Queens, the County of Annapolis, HRM, CBRM, and the Town of Amherst all have mandatory vaccination policies. Most of those municipalities have had them in place for a number of months. The municipality of the District of Lunenburg and the Town of Mahone Bay, I believe, just did it in, they just passed theirs in December, I think, for both of them. There are also a number that had policies in place that were mandatory vaccinations with opt-outs if you were fully vaccinated. So implications for you had to be fully vaccinated. And if you were not fully vaccinated, then you had to go through some sort of mandatory masking and/or testing program. So East Hans, Town of Lunenburg, Town of Bridgewater, Municipality of Kings, all had those. Most of them were set up similar to what we were doing, mandatory vaccinations. And if you weren't, then you had other requirements you had to meet. With the current restrictions that came into effect in early December, those provincial restrictions override our opt-out abilities, right? So we right now, whether you're vaccinated or not, have to do masking. We don't have to do testing, but masking regardless of vaccination status in certain situations. I will say that Omicron has changed the landscape a little bit, right? So the testing program that the province was doing, which we were looking to participate in, has been suspended. So they're not doing the workplace testing programs the same anymore. And it has, Omicron has been more contagious than anticipated. So there are some municipalities that are now considering moving towards mandatory vaccination policies that have some of that unpaid leave employment implication, similar to what we're doing. So the Town of Bridgewater is one of those that they are now considering mandatory vaccinations. I'm not sure where they are in their process. But since the workplace testing program has been suspended and they're no longer encouraging non-symptomatic testing, some of those municipalities are now seeing significant impacts on the organization despite mandatory vaccinations, right? So even municipalities like CBRM, I know I was on a call with representatives from CBRM. They have about eight hundred employees. They have a mandatory vaccination policy. And they're still seeing staff that are out. They've had, you know, over a hundred and fifty staff out, I believe. At one point, when I was talking to them early on in the new year, they had about a hundred and fifty of their eight hundred staff out on leave because of either a positive case or close contact isolation. That has changed again. It changes on a daily basis almost, but it changed again because the impact was lessened with the reducing the quarantine times. But in a general sense, we're definitely seeing impact. And the mandatory vaccination policies, you know, they do have a role. They haven't necessarily prevented spread in the offices and prevented it just because of the nature of the virus. So the policy that's in front of you is intended to protect the health and safety of MOC employees, council and members of the public. Vaccinations, we know, are a key element in the protection of employees and members of the public against the hazards of COVID-19. There's evidence demonstrating a higher incidence of COVID-19 among the unvaccinated populations. So the purpose is to provide the municipalities' expectations and requirements of staff, council, volunteers and committee members with respect to COVID-19 vaccination requirements to protect all the workers and the public we serve. By doing so, we're committed to ensuring that those working or interacting with others in municipal work environments have a level of comfort that all within the workplace have a minimum level of vaccine protection. So the scope, it applies to all employees for the municipality, council, volunteers and our public committee members regardless of workplace location. It does not, does not apply to members of the public who are accessing municipal services and programs. However, municipal staff may require proof of vaccination status from members of the public in accordance with public directions. So if you're coming in to pay your taxes, we're not going to say that as a member of the public, you have to be vaccinated. That's a mandatory service we provide. And we're not, we're not suggesting that the public has to have their vaccines in order to come into the municipal office. But if you're participating in recreation programs, the province does say that you have to be vaccinated. And so we'd be acting in accordance with those provincial directives when it comes to our programs. So the municipality at the discretion of the CAO or their designate can apply the policy also to contractors working within municipal premises. So if they're going to be working in a situation where they're in close contact to staff, we can look at that on a case-by-case basis. The CAO can.
Karen, we go back to public meetings. Will that policy have any effect on members of the public coming into our meetings?
No, it's members of our, if they're members of our committees. So yes, if they're, if they're members of the public, then they would, I believe, unless they're in a public venue. But I don't think we can require full vaccination if they're members of the public coming to watch council. We can do the mandatory masking and the mandatory, yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
So all current new employees, council members, public members of committees and council and volunteers have to be fully vaccinated from COVID-19 or future variants. Proof of vaccination has to be provided within two weeks of the effective date of the policy. So once council approves it and it becomes effective. So if council were, this is committee of the whole, so if council were to pass this today, it would be a recommendation to council. You can approve it next week. And, no, sorry, I'm incorrect. Pam, I think I'm incorrect. You can correct me. So I think today can act as notice, first notice. Next week you would be effective. That's what, how it would act. So boosters are required as soon as people become eligible and it's reasonably practical to schedule and attend an appointment for the booster dose. Any employee who fails to comply with the requirements within sixty calendar days of the effective date would be placed on an immediate unpaid leave of absence and may be subject to disciplinary action up to and including dismissal. Those who are partially vaccinated, unvaccinated, or those who don't disclose will be subject to additional measures in that interim time. So you'd have to do masking, PPE, work from home. That's pretty standard right now across anyways because of the provincial restrictions. So that's, that's not a lot of change. And then volunteer students and contractors who fail to comply, obviously, we can't put them on necessarily disciplinary action or dismissal, but they would be prohibited from working on municipal properties and work sites. So they would not be able to attend meetings and stuff in person if they were a committee member, a student or a volunteer. Counseling committee members who fail to comply would be prohibited from attending meetings in person, may be subject to further penalties, including suspension of any financial compensation. The accommodations for this, we have a duty to accommodate to the point of undue hardship. Those who cannot receive the vaccine for any reason protected under the Human Rights Act. So that would include any medical restrictions or religion. So employees may be required to provide appropriate documentation to support their inability to receive the vaccine. And if they're seeking an exemption from the policy, they have to submit a request in writing to the CAO. And then they'd have to be willing to participate in, in the accommodation process. So that's really kind of, uh, what the policy says in a nutshell. And I will, uh, stop sharing this so that you can have some discussion on it.
Yes, Adella.
Yeah, Tara, I was, I was looking at a, a listen, in, in part of the policy it says, um, what's something about minimum that, uh, minimum vaccination status, what, what's, what's minimum vaccination status? Is that one shot, two shots or?
So fully vaccinated in the policy is described as meeting the requirements of full, full vaccination, as may be changed from time to time by Novus Boosia Health. Currently, it means fourteen days or more have passed since you received your second dose of a two dose vaccine, or fourteen days have passed since receiving a single dose of unapproved series. But in any case, it's going to be, um, how the, how Novus Boosia Health defines it. So once the boosters are incorporated into that, then that's what we would define as fully vaccinated. But we're also have a clause in there that, um, if that definition doesn't change, we're requiring, uh, boosters as soon as practically possible. And that was, um, a recommendation, the language was recommended by legal review.
I can't hear whoever that is. So anybody, any questions? I mean, it's, it's a complex topic for sure. The background, I, I don't see them. I guess it doesn't matter. Anyone comment? Comments or questions?
Do we make a motion or what's the next step?
Well, that would be the next step unless there's some clarity that somebody wants.
So I just want to go back to that question if I could, uh, this is committee of the hall. So Tara, would this have to be referred to council next week for first reading?
Yeah, Pam, I think we had said that this could be for notice and then, uh, seven days, council would, uh, it would become effective next week. Am I incorrect?
No, it should be, this is giving notice and then they would have first notice at council. And then second and final notice on the next council.
Okay.
Yeah. So somebody prepared to make a motion that we recommend the adoption of the policy.
So moved.
Seconder? Second. Second to Patina, she had her hand up. All those in favor? Posed, motion is carried. Okay. Safety report. Bruce. Assuming here Summers. There he is.
Morning, everyone.
Morning, morning.
I want to take a couple of moments to give you the year end report on our health and safety program. Um, you have the report, uh, with you. Um, just wanted to go over the incident review quickly. Um, this year we had fourteen employee related incidents and twenty, uh, non employee, uh, incidents, um, in twenty twenty one. Luckily, and not luckily, but, uh, we had no serious injuries in any of those. And also we had no lost time, uh, reported, uh, during twenty twenty one. Uh, that was actually improvement over last year where we had, uh, four, uh, lost time incidences. Uh, we reached our milestone of a hundred thousand hours of, uh, workplace, uh, uh, without sa- safety incidences. And, uh, we're moving forward on our recognition of that, uh, early or later in January, February. We had four incidents related to contractors and three of those resulted in some minor, uh, damage to, uh, a public property. Uh, but no injuries were, uh, reported. Um, there was a significant increase in the number of fire and fire related incidences at the landfill. Um, but again, we only had one that was of any significance. Uh, the rest of them were all small and handled by the landfill staff, uh, to take care of that. Uh, causes of course of landfill fires continue to be likely most from, um, hazardous goods, uh, being, uh, included in the loads that, uh, we're offloading and dealing with. Um, most of them were related to flares, uh, batteries being, uh, put in other improper materials that are causing, uh, heat generation and, uh, ignition on the, of the, the waste. Uh, we continue our public education, um, of that, of improper, uh, loading that in the waste. And, uh, basically that is, uh, continuing on. Try and get back. The, uh, investigations and recommendations, uh, we had investigations started on thirty four of the incidences. Uh, twenty six of those investigations were completed, uh, leaving eight that we're, uh, working on right now. And, uh, of the twenty one investigations, thirty six recommendations, uh, were made. Uh, fourteen of those were actually completed and we're working, uh, on the other recommendations as we speak. So there's good progress being made in the, uh, the recommendations, uh, but there's still need for improvement to, uh, reduce the amount of time, uh, that we can evaluate and, uh, get these recommendations put in place. Uh, workplace inspections, we completed all of our calendar for twenty twenty one and corrective actions are in place. That includes all of the offices and all of the plants and Kaiser Meadow. So, uh, we handle all of those and, uh, are working on the recommendations. With respect to workers' compensation, uh, we maintained, uh, our merit position. Um, we're actually thirty seven percent lower than the industry average, uh, for our, our sector. And we continue to enjoy eleven percent, uh, merit in, uh, position. Uh, that relates to about a thirty two, uh, cent, uh, reduction off the municipal industry standard. And, um, in dollars, that's about ten thousand dollars annually based on our assessments, uh, at this point in time. We had no major claims in twenty twenty one, but we still have, uh, they use a three year rotating average of claims. So we're still, uh, we had about a three thousand dollar, uh, record in, uh, twenty twenty. And, um, we're working on, working off that. But again, no claims in twenty twenty one, so. Uh, the joint, uh, committee continues to meet every month, uh, some of the highlights that we had in twenty twenty one, of course, uh, and that a lot of time was spent on COVID nineteen work plans and preventative, uh, best practices. Uh, that continues as we speak today with, uh, the current wave. Um, we did complete, as Tara mentioned, the external audit and we received our twenty twenty two certifications, uh, which is a, a great step for us. Um, we did complete and implemented our new employee orientation program. Um, besides the human resources, uh, and department orientation, we now include a health and safety orientation, uh, during the first week of employment. Uh, that goes through all the regulations, uh, of the current safety program, uh, the reporting systems and things, uh, and also a couple of online training, uh, programs for the, the new employee. We, uh, completed first day training and, uh, did a lot of work on developing the ergonomic program. That'll be going to management, uh, likely within the next month. Uh, we're working jointly with, uh, workers' compensation on that. And, uh, we hope to get that implemented in the, uh, February, early, uh, spring. Uh, the development of the winter safety comp, campaign and again, our focus on prevention of slip, trip and falls, which is, uh, uh, a common, uh, problem for us. The, uh, safety certificate, as I said, uh, we scored our, uh, our external audit. It's on a rotating basis of external and internal audits. So we were, this year we were, uh, up for our external. Uh, we spent two or three days, uh, working on that with construction safety, uh, their safety advisors. And, uh, got through that, uh, we did score ninety seven, ninety seven percent, which is great. But, uh, we're working on areas of improvement, which there always are, and that'll be in the, uh, workplace, uh, uh, plan for twenty twenty two. Our relations with Department Labor Skills and Immigration continues to be, uh, positive. Um, and we've been actually working on them over the last couple of years with some of their, uh, audit requests, uh, and have actually helping them out, uh, with respect to, uh, uh, doing their surveys and things. With respect to the, uh, work plan update, our twenty twenty two plan is focused on the continuous improvement of our existing program, uh, with an emphasis on key areas of hazard assessment. Uh, we have to review, uh, the comprehensive, uh, hazard assessment for that includes all of the workplace activities, uh, at all of our sites. So that has to be done again. Uh, a focus on safe work practices, um, where's over a hundred or so that we're working on right now. Employee training and communications, again, trying to build the, uh, safety culture. And also looking at an emphasis on, uh, looking at trying to take our program to the next step with respect to administrative controls. And we're working on a program now of, um, launching down an integrated health and safety program, uh, software. Um, trying to try and get the administrative load down on the inspections and trying to make it easier for our staff to complete their inspections and, uh, accident investigations. And, uh, also give us a closed loop system where we can, uh, continue to follow up on our recommendations, uh, to, on corrective actions, make sure they're done on a timely basis. So I'll be coming back, uh, later during the budget process to, uh, to, with further information on that. And, um, that's the, uh, the main areas. So if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
More to it than it seems, Derek.
Uh, was that Bruce speaking?
Yes.
Bruce, we haven't met yet. I think you're on, I think you're on my list, uh, I've been doing orientation this last couple of weeks and, uh, uh, so I read the report and I, I got a couple of questions and I, I think they'd be in your, uh, your bellywink. The, you talk about the six incidents involving members of the public who suffered injury. And you mentioned the parade square in Chester Wharf particularly. Who's, whose jurisdiction is the Chester Wharf? Is that us or is that the Feds?
It depends on which wharf.
Yeah. Uh, I, I was just assuming it was the main wharf, but maybe isn't. Which wharf are we talking?
One by the lead up.
The incident in question, Derek, was, uh, actually, uh, on our property at the Chester Wharf. So that is why that we had that reported.
Okay, that's the lead all you saying, okay, I, I was thinking.
Oh, well, I'm not sure, but I mean, we own that one, but we own some property or.
Oh, understood. Maybe the question is which wharf are we talking about?
Oh, the, the ferry wharf.
Yes, okay, so the ferry wharf, is that federal?
Provincial.
Yes.
Provincial.
Yeah.
That, that is correct, but the incident that we're investigating now was actually on our property at that wharf. So we own some property down there.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the slip and falls at the parade square, were those all on the, going to the yacht club?
Uh, no, there, no, the, the incident that I referred to at Parade Square was on the, uh, walkway going to the, uh, yacht club. But the other incident was, uh, related to property just beside the, uh, um, the, uh.
The gazebo.
The gazebo, right, sorry.
Yeah.
Just couldn't get that word in, right beside the cathedral, yeah.
So is that one of the ones in litigation, the, you know?
Yes, one of those only is in litigation right now.
Was it a serious injury?
It was a trip and fall and there was, uh, no immediate injury besides some scrapes. But, uh, the investigation, it's ongoing, so.
Okay, okay, I won't get in, I just, just curious, I didn't, I didn't know about that. But my main one is, I'm going to go to is the, uh, uh, vehicles and equipment. You talk about continuing improvement and operator awareness and training. Uh, the road coming up to the sewer treatment plant is fifty kilometer an hour zone. And there's a very, very dangerous curve on that coming up to the plant. What type of instruction do your drivers have on that road, speed limit wise?
Their rules of road and the, all, uh, and defensive driving, uh, is what they're being trained on.
Are they doing fifty kilometers an hour around that turn? That's the speed limit.
Derek, I'll have to check with Krista on that, but, uh, to the best of my knowledge, that is correct.
Would you drive up here and go around a fifty kilometers an hour when there's nobody around and see if it's safe?
I'm not, I'm not sure of the question.
Do you know the turn I'm referring to coming up to the sewer treatment plant?
Yes, I do.
What do you think would be an appropriate speed limit on that turn? From a safety point?
I would have to investigate that a little bit more, Derek.
I guess jump in, uh, our, from what my knowledge, our guys, um, drive safely through that area. I can't see them probably making it to a fifty kilometer per hour on that road personally, but, um, we know it's a sharp turn. So they're always very cautious, to my knowledge.
Do you think that speed limit should be reduced on that, uh, on that area?
Um, I've actually never taken into consideration personally.
Yeah.
Um, I'm the guy.
It's a very dangerous turn, a lot of, a lot of brush growing up on the side now, which makes it more dangerous. Cause you can't, you can't even pull out to the side. I think it needs to be looked at, they're not going to make a big issue of it now, but it was on my list of things to bring up at some point. Seemed to be the appropriate thing.
What I could say, uh, uh, councillor Wells and council is that, I, I think as you know, that is a provincial road. Um, and the traffic authority for that road is the province. Uh, so any, any requests for, um, notwithstanding what we might, uh, direct or talk to our employees about, any change in speed limit would have to be investigated by the province. So it's probably in order to add that to our quarterly meeting with Public Works, um, to explore, to see if the traffic authority can look at, uh, if, uh, changing the speed limit is warranted.
Yeah, uh, but I may be speaking without, without remembering for sure, but it seems to me that unless it's the school zone, they won't reduce it below that speed limit, but.
But I think we could start off by having, cause we're probably the, our vehicles are probably the most, biggest users of that. And I drive it frequently and I, I can tell you that not everybody is driving carefully around that turn. And I'll leave it at that and I'd like that to be, uh, looked at because it is extremely dangerous, especially now when there's no maintenance on the cutting of the trees on the side.
Okay.
I'll bring, I'll bring that up with, uh, Krista and, uh.
But do drive, just drive up, just so you're familiar with it, just drive up and, and tell me what you think, you know, realistically.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just a request.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else, any questions, comments? Okay, thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
Yeah, so we'll do six point four and then we're going to have to take a five minute break or something as I'm going to have to, I have to go watch them. So six point four.
I think we need a motion, don't we, or?
Uh, to receive the report?
And, yeah, he's got it on the bottom there, it's two different.
Okay, sorry Floyd, I missed that.
No, that's fine, I just make a motion to approve option one.
Seconder?
I'll second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Discussion. All those in favor?
Alright, thank you.
Those motions carried. Okay, six point four, infrastructure operation, purchase of pickup truck.
I think I have Dan Pittman here as well. Um, so this one for the pickup truck um actually got a little more complicated than we would have thought. Um, thank you, COVID. Um, so I'm gonna let Dan, he uh assisted us with this one in the end. It just went a little further than we thought it would, so I'll let Dan take the floor and uh explain what has happened here with the truck.
Yeah, sure. Does everyone have the R F D in front of them?
I do not, actually.
Uh, I wonder if I can share the screen here. If I get the right one.
Yeah. You got it.
See that there now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, so yeah, it the uh part of this that we probably want to just look at um is the background, give it some context and the discussion. Because um this is for an order of a new pickup truck, four by four, which is a fairly standard purchase. Uh, however, uh we can get the background here, it did come before council. So in in twenty for the capital budget in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, there was fifty-five thousand dollars allocated for this purchase. Uh, which is in line with with previous purchases. Uh, however, prices started going up, so when we got around to procuring it, it was taken back to council and the budget was increased ten thousand dollars to sixty-five thousand.
Yeah.
That was in September twenty twenty-two, you'll see that there in the background. So we went, because this is a uh considered a high-value purchase for goods, uh we went to open competition. And that was thirty days, generally you go go in competition for thirty days. It closed in October twenty uh October twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, and no bids were submitted for that. So that was interesting. Uh, so then, because the province has a standing offer. Um, and we can use it work uh as part of the M A C sector, we can use the standard offer. So the fifteen-day invitation to quote directly to those dealers, three dealers on the provincial standing offer. Uh, what was interesting there again, no bids were submitted. Um, I got to talk with one uh the fleet managers, account managers, and he asked the question, do you have a delivery date? And I said, no, I'm leaving that very much open to you. I don't want to nail you down on anything. Uh, and that was the end of it. So it left us in a position where, what are we gonna do next? Um, so the decision was made at that point then to go directly to a dealer and get a replacement for the current vehicle directly. And that takes us then to what is uh an alternative procurement circumstance. And that's none under number four, which is the absence of bids in response to an open or selective tender, which we did both. So um a little bit of the discussion there uh is that the prices have been going up. And this is caused by supply chain disruptions uh primarily due to COVID and and inflationary pressures. But uh the end of lockdown in twenty twenty-one, there was a, there was an increase in demand for S U V's and pickup trucks in particular. Uh, and normally, you just up the production on that. But there was a shortage uh of semiconductors. So talking with the dealers gets very interesting as well. There are a lot of trucks out there, they're produced, they're on various lots, not not dealer lots, but you know, uh storage lots, uh manufacturing plants across the country, but they have no chips, no semi- semiconductors, so the market's not getting them. And so we're in this position where typically uh dealers are competing for customers among themselves. And now it's customers are completely competing for trucks. So we don't really know when that situation's going to change, but uh you'll see there, you know, uh the prices are going up. And so this is why we had to come back and because under the recommended motion uh there is now an increase uh in in the uh in the cost of the vehicle itself. So the vehicle's at sixty-six, nine seventy-six, this is an order and the order i- and we're out five months anyways on this. Uh, that's their f- best estimated delivery dates in five months.
Five months.
Yes, five months. Yeah, normally, again, you know, you could get these vehicles maybe turned around in a month or so on an order, but we're we're uh five months out. And and already um we're seeing, you know, the shipping uh ports, some of them closing down in China. I don't know how that's gonna affect semiconductor uh deliveries, uh manufacturing plants typically, cause it's not just semi-conductors, but there's uh shortages in in various parts, uh because it's a, you know, it's a global supply chain. Um, also now we're seeing an impact on the on the trucking industry, so transportation, you know, land transportation's affected as well. So all of this has had an impact on the supply side on prices. A sign of the times, really. So um, you know, I mean, there are, there are some limited options here, I suppose. We can just continue to shop around, but it takes our time up. And uh we can, you know, go out for an R F Q again, but no guarantees that there's gonna be bids on that or that we're even gonna get, you know, anything uh that's gonna be the value that we have now. So uh that's kind of where we're at. And uh it going back to the motion, you'll see a ten percent contingency or an add-on. And that's for some aftermarket safety accessories. Uh, for instance, we have um a requirement for uh uh roof-mounted uh flashing lights, um a tailgate power lift. Uh, those can be fairly expensive, uh three to five thousand dollars, I guess. So we've we've put some money in for that because we're not sure, we should get that from the dealer or if it's aftermarket. Um, but we have five months till delivery, so we can uh nail that down a little better. So that's where it's at. Any questions?
That we haven't, that we, that some of the local dealerships didn't bid on providing us with a truck.
Yes, I I I find that too. Um, a- and there was at least two notified of that. But um in talking with one, they they just didn't have the inventory, they're, they're basically going on what they have and the best price they're getting at the time. So.
Yeah.
Uh, it it might, you know, soften up a little bit, where we might see some more and more vehicles coming through now, but again, it's it's unpredictable.
I think the trucks are built, they just don't have the semiconductors for them.
That's correct, yeah, yeah.
Okay, people, well, there we go. What do we want to do?
Can can I ask a question if you can hear me?
Yeah, yeah. Can we get that their recommendations off the screen so that we I can see everybody?
We are that. Stop share right here, sorry.
Yeah, okay, Adella, you had a question?
I just, I just uh uh probably maybe Krista could have answered it, like how imperative is that we have to fly this truck right away? Like, is it, is it usable? Is it? I just want to get a sense of of uh, you know, of how that works. It's just our policy to change them every so many years.
Yeah, so this would be, for your purposes, this would be uh Jared's truck, which has a lift gate we used to haul the trailer. So for this instance, fairly important, I would say. Um, and chances are for next fiscal, we'll be looking for another truck to trade out another one. Um, so because it's such a long wait now, another five months, um it would be great. Cause I don't know what the future's gonna hold, if it's gonna get worse or better, but um.
Yeah.
Ideally, um we have had some other issues with some trucks, so um we don't have a lot of backups right now.
Okay, thank you.
It would be appreciated.
Anybody?
Was it true, uh Krista, that one of the trucks is down right now in a sander as well?
It has been, and we've had a juggle with the landfill to get other thing. Yeah, it's been a complicated time, but um yeah, it's with the dealer. Because even with the dealers, they're um very busy.
Is this true, Alan?
Yeah.
Is this, is this truck for the landfill?
This particular truck is for um Public Works, for maintain- uh maintenance um uh staff. So this one's used for hauling the uh.
Gen- general purpose, not the landfill.
This one's not the landfill, but we were.
Well, we always share back and forth, but it's not specific.
Yes.
Okay, so we need a truck. What do we want to do?
Well, we guess buy a truck, we need a truck.
Yes. So somebody want to move that we purchased the Sharon's or?
Yeah, I think we need to, uh, I guess for our budgeting purposes, this whole um inflation and supply chain issue is gonna it really impact our budget, I think, going forward. But I will move that we uh purchase this truck.
Yes, of course.
Second it?
Second.
Second.
Go.
Discussion, all those in favor? Posed, motions carried.